President Biggers, members of the board, and Dr. Gloria, members of the cabinet, and the several guests. What an honor, what an awesome experience for me to watch this team this year to win, to go 31-0, to play at the level that these girls play, with the connections that they have with each other. It's just, it's something you just don't get to experience in my position. You just really don't get to experience that very often, if ever, in a high school, in a principal's experience. So, the selflessness, the hours they put in, the teamwork that they demonstrate, the communication, spoken and unspoken in the pool, their ability to rally from any situation and do almost whatever they wanted at will was pretty phenomenal. And their toughness is amazing. And I think I know somebody here who has a little bit more insight than I do as to how that journey went. So I will recognize Coach Ethan DeGrotto, and let's applaud Ethan.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for having us. I've been lucky enough to come to a couple of these. And it gets, the years where we're not winning, we miss this type of stuff. And it's always so great to be honored. And we thank you for everything that you do for our school district and to make this town such a great town, such a great, great high school. I was an LBHS alum, I say it all the time. I'm sure we're proud of this town, of this high school. And I couldn't think of a better group of girls to be recognizing tonight. Obviously, it's easy to look at the successes and wins and losses, or no losses luckily this year, but the wins and accolades. And to talk about all those things, and they were amazing. It was an amazing journey. But the real story to me was the, what happened behind the scenes. We have an incredibly tight-knit group of girls that bonded together this year through the idea of being selfless and being a family and fighting and working for each other on a daily basis. They are such a hard-working and dedicated group of girls. I feel so lucky. We have 22 girls on our team. And all 22 work year in, year out for this sport, not just during the season, but in the offseason. We're leaving after this, we're going to club training, all of us. We're already talking about how we can be back in this situation next year. And we're in a very, very lucky position and very, I feel very fortunate to be a part of it. And they're an amazing group of girls in the classroom, out of the classroom. And it was such an amazing journey this year for me to be a part of it. And again, we thank you for honoring us tonight. And I know I speak for the team when I say we're proud to be LBHS breakers. And I think this group did our community and our town extremely proud of the shame. So, thank you very much.
Ethan, I have to say one thing. You guys, the one thing that I didn't go to your games because I get very nervous and I tend to throw things. And I'm not good at water polo. I just am not good at it. I wash my own kids too hard. I feel bad for your parents. But what you could see every time, anytime you looked at an article, anytime you saw videos of you all, was you really do care about each other. And it doesn't matter who scores, it doesn't matter who's drowning the next person and what's going on in set, it doesn't matter. You all were in fact selfless. And that is a testament to each one of you. It really, you don't see that. You don't see it, you just don't. And so, take that with you, you know, as those of you who graduate, the ones who are moving up, remember that, because you will succeed every time with that. And I just, I just want you to know. It's obvious to those of us who were reading and watching.
Mostly, mostly reading about it because I was thinking the same thing, that I enjoyed reading the comments from the girls on the team about each other. And particularly recently about how much they enjoyed getting the assist. That that was just as much pleasure and made them as happy and the support from the other girls. But it's, for the seniors and the juniors, they've had several remarkable years in a row, which is really unusual for a program. You read about it in some programs occasionally. And so now you're in one of those situations where you're in a high school that has year in and year out at this point, these remarkable, successful years. I did start coming to games a few years ago and actually trying to learn the sport. It was, you probably think that sounds silly, but it's, so much of it is, I can want an aerial view because you need to see what's going on that's sort of underneath. And I also came to appreciate how difficult it is and how rough it is. So I had a neighbor, you know, some years ago, her daughters, I think, are now 21, 30, and they played water polo. And they talk about, you know, the torn suits and the really tight suits and the double suits and because of what's going on that you can't see. So I learned to appreciate that, how hard it is. But could you, Ethan, can you introduce? The girls are having interviews.
Yeah, absolutely. Gloria, just have them introduce themselves and they can tell you what year they are. Start with our youngest one here.
I'm Gabby and I'm a freshman.
I'm Bella.
Oh, I'm Gabby Denny and I'm a freshman.
I'm Bella Baldridge and I'm a senior.
Bella's also one of our captains this year and she's going to Stanford next year.
I'm Evan Tingler and I'm a junior.
I'm Kyla Whitlock, I'm a junior.
I'm Danielle Varelli and I'm a junior.
I'm Rachel Gray and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Grace Scholahan and I'm a freshman.
I'm Morgan Badelfand and I'm a freshman.
I'm Taya Walsh and I'm a junior.
I'm Cypia Lucas and I'm a junior.
I'm Alana Evans, I'm a junior.
I'm Angela Bregan and I'm a senior.
I'm Alex Perez and I'm a junior.
I'm Claire Kelly and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Elise Cameron, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Isla Richards and I'm a junior.
I'm Quinn Winter and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Cece Stewart and I'm a sophomore.
So a couple of our other captains, Claire Sani and Aria, couldn't make it tonight. And they're both off to play next year as well. And they were texting me really bummed they couldn't be here, so sorry they missed it. But as you can see, we have a lot of juniors and sophomores and freshmen. And we're hoping to keep this fun ride going.
We read about the juniors. But we're gonna have to watch the Cal Stanford games.
That's right, for sure. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks for having us.
All right, next we have the public comment for non-agenda items. Is there anyone that's, I can't see. All right, we have parts of this.
Mr. Hills, you may move the hoodie back if you'd like, maybe a little bit.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. It's on shoulders. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Howard Hills. And I wanted to come back. I've been meaning to come back for a few months because the last time I attended a work meeting, you had your governance consultants here. And I actually wanted to come back and respond to a couple of questions that Board Member Normandin asked. She arrived at the meeting after the public comments and she, at the beginning of the meeting, she left before the public comments at the end of the meeting. And it really is, response to her question, she asked a very interesting question. She said, "Well, what does it mean when people say we're doing something illegal? And what happens if people say we're doing something illegal and then nothing happens?" And we talked about the Brown Act. And I just wanted to come back and close the circle on that and say this. I said it to the board members and to the consultants that you had here, both really nice gentlemen, I liked them a lot. But the thing about it is, is this. The Brown Act is largely misunderstood even by the consultants. Because people tend to view the Brown Act as something that restricts the board and empowers the public. And it does do that, that's one of its functions. But it also does something very different. It shields the board from accountability. The people, the lobbyists who broke the Brown Act were not stupid. And they were getting paid a lot of money by people on both sides of the fence, the public and the school districts and the official state government complex. And see, you see what the Brown Act does? It's interesting is this. If there's a violation of the Brown Act, so somebody comes in and says, "You did it wrong." What happens under the Brown Act is they have 90 days to do something about that. And so, if they don't do it, you're off the hook. So, members of the public, that what it does is it shifts the burden onto members of the public. And if I'm a lawyer for a school board and the board comes to me or the superintendent comes to me and says, "Now that guy Howard Hills came in and he started saying all kinds of stuff about that we didn't, we're doing it legally and everything." What that tends to do is it causes the lawyers to say, "Well, let's see what he does. Howard Hills can get up and shoot his mouth off all he wants. If he doesn't go to the district attorney and get the district attorney to go in for an injunction, or if he doesn't file for an injunction within 90 days, then you're off the hook." The problem with that is that it tends to cause lawyers for school districts to have a standard of what we can get away with as opposed to what's right. In other words, if there's a question, "Did we do it right, did we do it?" Well, let's see if we get away with it. When I was General Counsel of federal agency, I got all my lawyers together and I said to them, "Our standard is not what we can get away with. Our standard is if we were in court and there were a judge there, what would the judge tell us is right? And that should be our standard." And it's not just here in Laguna Beach, statewide and national, nationwide, that there is this tendency to adopt a low standard of duty and care. And so, I'm out of time, but it probably won't be the last time I come back to talk about this or other related issues. But I thank you for your attention, your time.
Does anyone else, it was just to speak on an item that's on the agenda? We'll move to reports. You don't have to do the rest this evening?
No.
Okay, that's okay. The LUPA. We don't have a report tonight. Let's see, ah, short one. Okay. The parent educators conference is going on in Elton, Elton, Ontario right now, where we have eight special ed instructional assistants there and one intervention parent educator. I talked to Margaret tonight, she says the first day was pretty good. There's about 1,300 in attendance there right now. So, it's quite a crowd. Let me see, reclassification of special ed instructional assistants is just finished up. And CCA is appreciative of the ongoing collaborative relationship we have with the district in that process. And planning, CCA is having their first planning meeting for negotiations coming up on the, we have our planning meeting on the 27th and our first negotiations meeting is on the 29th. And let's see, Thurston's and social assistants are looking forward to their meeting with Ms. Sardebo on the 24th, I believe, at Thurston, I think is coming up. Oh, the 17th. Oh, Friday. Great, thank you. Over radio, I think, the 24th. Good, very good. And CCA's constitution and bylaws are going off to San Jose for their final approval. So I was very happy about that. And Classified's new employee orientation took place this last Friday. And so we shared a lot of new things that the district can offer for new employees. And Margaret said it was great to meet all the new employees and help them be part of the LBUSD family. So, thank you for following up. We have representatives, PTA's, School Power.
I'm heading back here. I have my son calling me like crazy right now. His phone's vibrating, I'm looking at my notes. Hi there. First of all, thank you again, Alicia. I know Yadi's not here, but when I was reading that article, I'm like, Sam, as a fourth grader, would love that. Like, it's not just the upper grade kids. So it's pretty exciting reading it. And I agree, just bringing the real life stuff is pretty cool. So anyway, coffee break. I think a blast went out. I hope it did and everybody got it. But just to reiterate, the speaker's changed, which I love him. So I'm happy, at least we have a good quality speaker. But Dr. Weitman is coming in and stepped in very last minute, so we appreciate that. And the topic is how to deal with today's teenager. So I will be there. And advocacy forum, I think I mentioned that as well, but I'll reiterate that we have that next Tuesday, the 21st, at the Orange City Hall from 9:30 to 11:00. Where we have the five OC school superintendents will present and discuss the educational issues and how the districts are dealing with them. So I'm just gonna say, does anybody know if they're coming or not? And Top of the World, Elmoreau have their Jog-a-thons next Friday, the 24th. And, let's see, PTA. And we're all going through our elections right now, PTA's, and we actually did vote. And Sheila Parker will be the next council president coming in, and then Sarah's right behind her, Sarah Duran from Top of the World. So elementary school presidents are stepping right up in line, which is, and they're gonna be awesome. So, anyway, that's it. But yes, Top of the World, I know, had their elections, both late. I haven't heard from the other units yet, but I know it, actually, I was a little bit, I don't know the right word for it, last meeting when I was saying how we were feeling a little bit, we're struggling a lot. All of a sudden, this kind of new surge has happened, so I'm feeling very positive. So, it's all good. Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to talk to School Power? Why, at least just listen to us. It kind of, I think, alumni. Board members, that would like to report.
I'm here, Richard. I volunteered the Epic Challenge at the last meeting and I worked at the Minute to Win Games. It was so loud in the gym, I had a great time.
That's my.
For me and my finals as a parent, so it was really fun. I also happily participated in Read Across America at Elmoreau and TOW. I read in a first grade class at Elmoreau and a second grade at TOW at 30, which I did. It was wonderful to me. Back in the classroom. I held the banner, the Patriot's Day parade for LBUSD. Had a great time cheering and cheering on our public schools. It was great.
You worked that out, so glad to see you do that.
So we have a nice contingent of lots of candy.
Thank you.
I'm on scholarship foundation for Laguna Beach High School and the deadline is closed for that. So right now, since the deadline's closed, all the scholarship managers will review the applications and we're working on combinations.
And I was going to say something for that. We had 162 applicants with 1,540 discrete applications.
Oh, that's excellent.
162 kids, 1,540 applications for various scholarships. And we gave almost $400,000 last year.
And I want to comment on the scholarship foundation. We're getting really technologically advanced. We're getting more work in on, we're progressing forward. It's very exciting.
Those of us that like to progress forward and need more ambition.
I attended the Thurston PTA meeting and they did elect a new slate. And we have Jimmy Zadian, my senior, right? He'll be our president, I'm sure, for Thurston. I also attended the School Power meeting as a district rep with the district leaders, which was celebrating the dinner dance, but also talking about many things. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that amazing student session. And I thought for sure you're gonna wrap the study that was recent, but if you then wait a few weeks, I can tell someone that was their argument and give them this argument, they'll actually find that's their argument. Your sudden, right, it was all, yes, kidding. But I attended Community Coalition, which is very interesting. And we really did talk about the fact that they have their strategic plan coming up and what they're, what they're supposed to be doing and how they're being supportive or not being supportive and what can they do. And that was great. So we got to talk to them about things that would align them into one of the Elcap goals. They didn't really support that. And, you know, we had these great goals in place and how they seem to pick one and do that. But they had, they had different speakers come out. And I thought this calendar was amazing, so I suggested to them, because they're talking about all the different things that parents can do. And how to start that way. But I was like, imagine if you had one for all the different things in town, like for them as a task, or if they gather stuff, it could be online. But they gathered this thing, all the different parenting, educational. And they were, they were interested in the idea of kind of being the resource and gathering all that for us. Something trying to do that, I think, a lot of us. I think that I'm waiting for it. But this would be a good place for them.
Yeah.
If they wanted to have everything together, a logic to supporting complex. And so there were two really great things to do at the same time. Right. And I tend to line things, what school were working on and what speakers are coming in and stuff like that. And then, let's see, and they can talk about their date night, which I think I would better understand. I'm like, oh, I wish I could have done that time when my kids were in shows. And then, the other speaker that came up was, that's, that's, we already did, we already have. And so, but I did have a coalition also called CAPO. And so, you know, so the team speaker that went there and then came here. And so, those kind of goals, I thought, you know, my kids, they come home with those windows and all the DVD techs and all these stuff. I don't know if they have those, but they have them. So, but that was, it was really nice to go. Very appreciated, having an opportunity to be there. And we have to go again. And then, there was, on NPR this morning, there was the conversation, I don't know if you guys heard it, but they're talking about a new bill. And it's the beginning of the conversation of how to put $500 million back into education. And the teachers between years of five, between years, how to give them where they're not paying California state taxes to encourage people to come. And just like that, they're like, create a national model that they implement here and eventually look at it. And so tax breaks, they say people like, oh, they can just give more money. But it's all this discussion, but they've actually created this bill and they're, you know, sending a rally committee. And it was, I happened to be at OSHA and for goal improvement evaluation, and all the teachers were talking about it. And they were so excited. And so, I don't know if you guys heard it or not, but I thought it was quite a fascinating.
It's a teacher group.
Because you lose them at five years and how do you hold on to them? And it talked about all the expenses you start incurring once you start having your own kids and all the, right, but they don't really have big bumps in pay, big jumps in pay during that time period. And it was, it was exciting. It was a great reason to education. And that's all.
Also did the Read Across Americas and got to do the flag salute at the TOW too. So that was a lot of activity that day. And I had a special day kindergarten K1 and then a first grade class, or second grade class. Just loved that. I just, I'm gonna be really sad when I don't get to do Read Across America anymore. Great job in the parade, everyone. I did, I just was really cheering you on on the sidelines. And then, did the NGSS training, I guess, with Jen McClellan, who is, again, just wonderful. And I'm feeling better. I think we're headed somewhere. It's good. I, it is a process and it is, it is hard. It changes hard and it's arduous. But I, if we can get there, I am certain that it's gonna be the best thing for kids. Because that's what it's about. And it really is that, just the shift in the actual teaching is phenomenal. And it'll just be, it won't be like anything. It's gonna be great.
It's a power, isn't it?
It is, yes. It's a power, yes, yes. And then did Chef's Challenge last night. Congratulations to Jeff and Jason. They did a lovely job. They really worked their out. They cooked and they cooked their fingers in the bone. Their fingers in the bone. So, you know, that was very beneficial. Thanks School Power for putting that on once again. It's a part of that. That's it.
That's it. Okay. And the gal from Community Coalition, was that the person PTA meeting? It's the second time she's been. So she comes to that. So they're really targeting a lot, that middle school, those ages in there. So she comes and makes the same presentations, not the same, but talks about the date night and the other parenting opportunities that are coming up. And they have, I think she said, at the date night, they still had a few openings, but 45. And 45, yeah. So they have a really big turnout. So that. I was just, sorry, I put my notes. There they are. I stepped in for a little bit at the parent ed that Weston provided for the teachers. And also was, there was translation for them. So it was being translated right then for the parents that were there. And that was really, I knew that we had that equipment. We didn't have that in any tenants, but it was. It was there. Yes, yes. I was actually thinking that was for the students. Well, it was. No, I think you're right, I think it's. And then, I don't know how it came out this night when I just.
Jenny, right here?
Yeah, I did it sophomore and so we didn't, at least.
27.
But, right, busy and. Right, so we were just coming in for the behaviors or the gifted students and helping parents understand that there is sometimes a bit. Overexcellency. Right, overexcellency. But similar to some other, you know, issues that they might not be thinking that their child will have those because they are so bright, that they often don't have it now. So they passed that out and we got compensation at day two. And I just had to comment to Mia, I'd say, I guess he's Jimmy. I say Jimmy's, but then he has stepped in to be PTA president. That's what we, it's really good. I mean, he's, he hasn't been here that long in the community.
He's in K.
This year, he took the position of membership at Elmoreau and parvataria at Thurston. And then he's moving out to be PTA president.
Or recruiting him. They work on that list.
Or, or more things. I attended, I don't know, I got the postcard about it, but I also knew the program, the EIP program at Assistance League. And they were celebrating 40 years. And they had a couple of speakers. One is, he sent something on TV, like I've lost it, please. And said, he was 20s and downs, Hillary's on the stuff. And he spoke in his mom's, I was just flinching because he really can't hear what he was saying. But they also had a couple of speakers and they were, the dud that they have, they were, was asleep. If you're not familiar with that, Inner Wiiree is, it's birth to one. They had a brat for years, so it's free to anyone who comes. And they, the different times that we take foster babies there, they come from all of the county. Because it's, sometimes they actually are really putting the word out to get people to come. They have fourth therapists and it was nice for me because I knew some of them that worked with kids I had before. And they were back for that celebration. Assistance League is really, really supportive of that in this community. And for a lot, for a long time, it was kind of a non-medal program. But it's, it's really one of those, any disabilities, any potential disabilities from first year and type of that is an hour of parents getting together while, while suddenly all the grandparents.
They can just hold it, yeah.
And they walk those babies, sit and hold them, feed them for an hour while the parents go. And having attended those sessions, that's a really pretty cool part, particularly in this program. Because I had kids in other programs when they're after one. And I often would marvel at, particularly young parents, how they seem to have such a grip on all the challenges their child is facing. That's where they really get it, in that first year of them. It's a real, most of the sessions are really teary because they're really struggling with, you know, we did everything right and our child is learning these. And because some of the problems are awareness. It's not just, you know, kids with a range of downs or something. It's, so it's, for me, it was always a good learning experience, but it was really nice to be able to attend that. I didn't realize they've been doing it for 40 years. That's a long time. I went also to the art show that they have, the fourth grade art show. And it was Art, Tosa, Bridgette has really, really done a lot for that Elcap program. They were displayed so professionally and they had snacks, food for people to eat. And it acted really nicely done. And the parents of various, the kids were really excited. And then they had a power pledge that they showed the name of the teacher and all the kids in that class. And I was watching that, it didn't move real fast. They need to be quicker. At that time, there was a little girl waiting with her mom, saying, we're taking her picture with her class. She was so excited to take the picture on the screen that had her name on it. So it was, Bridgette was there, of course, and Alicia was there. And again, we have, I don't think that people appreciate the after-hours things that our, that our staff, our administrators are committed to doing than being there at those extra hours. And I always take note of that. But that was a really, really nice little show. I think that, I think that it was at the last PTA council because you were there. Was that when Shannon presented about, talking about the rapid program? And I thought that was really, it's such a good vehicle to use that, because then that gets spread to other people so that they have a familiarity with what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I'm, we'll talk about that later. But it's been, even with break week in there, of course, there were some great, yeah, during break week, they have, those kids have to commit to staying here.
Winner's sports.
Yeah. Thank you.
I also did Read Across America.
Yeah, oh, I forgot that. I also, I did too. And I got to share with Irene when I did it then at Top of the World. We had, and the kids have been through an hour assembly.
Yeah.
And they settled, and they sat.
They sat.
They sat perfectly. And Irene was, well, they sat verbally because, well, it's, I went to the wrong room. So, over there in the library. And Irene was doing Simon Says, right? To get them all the energy out. They were in a whole group. She was head of all going and they sat down and they. Over there in the library, and Irene was doing Simon Says, right, to get them all the energy out, they were in a whole group, she was ahead of all going, and they sat down, and they, and then at, at moral, I had a special day class, and the teacher was masterful in what they do to explain why the day was different, because that is so critical, and they were, it was great. So, thanks for being around here, and I love seeing you, and, so I can call you now, J V.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm saying Haley in front.
Yeah.
Dr. Moria.
You don't need that.
Master chef.
Yeah, master chef, well, I'll bet there, ten, my, our, our, I shouldn't say my, our golden special.
You guys are sharing that.
Um, so we had, uh,
Most of you.
One thing, Phil Boy came and did, um, a school climate workshop, and, uh, as a result of, of that conversation, I think the, um, feedback that I received directly from several of the teachers and administrators and, and, um, attendance was, we want to bring him back and run our whole disaster, this, they felt there was so much value. Um, and having that connection and all, and also to show the positive school climate, and your teachers, uh, promote that in classrooms as well. Um, so we'll be looking forward to finding ways to, to, to do that, and I think we're, I think we're going to be able to bring him back in, in August, actually, before school starts, at one of our freshman holiday days, I think that would be a great use of that day. Um, I was up at Top of World at lunch on Monday, we did, uh, more traveling cafe, uh, great opportunity for us to kind of sit down. Um, or actually, it was kind of awkward at times, because we were actually watching lower grade teachers eat, because there was a whole lot of seats at the table, uh, which brought a great conversation about, you know, maybe we could do something about that, and so, uh, it's always good when you go and kind of, in that, you know, if you can address that, maybe again, kind of your school climate, culture, maybe develop something that would be really useful for their staff to be able to work together. Um, we had a, a large group from the Santa Clara County Office of Education, um, they actually were the ones who brought a contingent of commensurators and some teachers, um, from throughout Santa Clara County, uh, who were interested in about, um, twenty plus who came to visit our district, um, they did a little thing at the county office and spent the afternoon here. Um, we could about, uh, anywhere between one to two visits a month from other school districts that want to come see the technology, the forced early classroom setups. Um, one actually, uh, administrator asked if he could bring his entire staff back, and Mike's like, oh, that's kind of going on. Um, but it is great to see, and it showcases the amazing work that our teachers are doing, um, inside the classroom, because that's where we take them. They get to see that learning environment happening, and we, they went to, um, Thurston, and they went, they started off at high school in the library, uh, Mike did a group presentation, um, then they went up to a couple different classrooms, obviously separated groups, so not turned into a parent destruction, our students are fairly used to it, and and visited, uh, several classrooms at high school, then they went up to the middle school, visited civil area, and then ended in the, um, clavatory, clavatory, I think I'm trying to call it, I want to say clavatorium or something, I have a. So, um, and, and, so we'll be having more people, I'm sure, coming back, and we'll do that, um, Read Across Americas as well, I do want to, uh, say thank you to Mary Blanton and to Nikki Ramon, who really, um, put that together. Uh, so, uh, such an amazing event, uh, first time I was able to participate, and, uh, well, in the year, I still have my hat, thanks to Mary Blanton, um, that I'll be able to do it next year. And, uh, the students were just, just the best audience, um, especially from a person who's a social studies major at high school, um, I tried to inject a lot of fun into the reading, uh, but the kids had some amazing questions, I showed that to, uh, a group of, uh, fourth, fourth graders, I believe, uh, who just, they were frying me about, like, all the books I like to read, and all the different things, and they were, and then I would get asked that question, and the same with the third group at, at Top of the World, um, when they were, they were all asking, but I like to read, and then, of course, they all come to volunteer all the books that were in their neighborhood, so, uh, it is just a great, great event, so I'm very thankful. And on top of great events, yes, the Chef Challenge, our Golden Special, um, okay, another great event that, uh, School Power puts on, I do have to say thank you to the, uh, city. Uh, Chief Ferrinella, Chief Montenegro, just came out, um, they were on the listening, um, of the Chef Challenge, but they worked, we both, all four of us worked for sale, right? Here's your new appreciation from that work that goes in to putting out that much food, and, um, the, the chef there, uh, I believe he started work the day prior, on this day off, at eleven A M. and worked, got everything prepped, and, um, thank you to Longyear for all that, that's just an amazing event for the community, so, that was a, we'll tend to appreciate that, and so, I mean, next year, um, and maybe we'll face off again to defend our, our crap and our shirt, so, that's it.
Thank you, I'll just echo the, the Longyear and their efforts, and putting that together with School Power, that was a really fun event, that was a really fun event, and I'm very competitive, so I'm really glad you're one. Uh, I had a great time at Read Across America, also, I was able to attend at both schools, and, um, I had the undergrads, which is adorable, because it matches kind of my kids' age, but I get to see them in a more of a group environment, so I see how the kids interact, where I don't normally get to see that with my own two kids outside of fighting, so, it was a great event for me there, and then, of course, the Patriots Day Parade, I, it was amazing. I did it last year also, but I just get amazed how many people from our community come out to support that event, so I thought that was great.
Okay, well, a lot of instructional services events have been called out, so I'll just, I want to highlight a few. Um, I want to thank Amy Pernan for her support, um, with leading, uh, the dashboard, it was Dr. Moria, so, uh, so you are all aware, uh, it does go live this week, so they did not delay. It will go live this week without our local, um, indicators, but thank you to Amy and Dr. Moria for all their support around that. Um, I also want to highlight Irene, we has hosted our second of two joint PLCs down here in the district. Um, Mr. Duddy and Mr. Conlon were supportive with groups as well, and, um, Irene had, uh, identified, um, an opportunity for professional development following that, so thirty of our teachers started in the work around the new dyslexia legislation, so, uh, where would we be without Irene, I'm not sure, so we're glad that, um, she supported us, and at the end of the training, at four o'clock, teachers were still leaning forward, like, no, no, I have so much I want to learn, it, please don't call it, don't call it, uh, it was great, so, thank you. Um, one last thing that we're engaged in, and it's still being shaped, but I think it's important, an important celebration, um, thank you to Amy, and also for Chris, uh, for their support around Breaker Advance, that will be the name, we think, for our AP bootcamp, so we want to really support our students in creating a vision around, I believe I have self-esteem, and I can, I can succeed in those courses, so we're trying to identify, um, dates and times, and what it's gonna look like, but we're on our way, so thank you.
So, um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend Read Across America at where the Patriots Day Parade, because I was at the California School Public Relations Association Conference, and, um, in addition to learning a lot of great new things, both technical and, uh, more global policy procedure wise, um, we were also awarded two awards at that event, which is quite notable for a district our size, because we compete with county offices of education with twenty P R. people in their office. Um, so we were awarded an award of merit for our annual report, which comes out each June, and our, an award of excellence for our video, the Reimagine Classroom and Library, so think back, that was the one,
Yeah.
um, where, what not to do, where I was going through the scene, the scenes are moving really fast, so.
Yeah. You stepped on lunch.
Yeah, uh, no, that was the report.
Oh, that was the report, okay, I get it now.
Yeah, this was the one, and it moved really fast, it had, you know, the guy who decided to become the teacher, and then meeting the superintendent,
Okay. Yes.
because he wanted to make his kids' schools look best to everybody, so, so congratulations to primarily Andy and Ani for their work, um, in creating those things, it's really, um, quite an honor considering what the, uh, very fancy publications that were, that worked, so.
So, that, that's the one, was that the community?
Yes. Yes. Oh, and I have to mention, happy birthday to Ani, make her work on her birthday, today's her birthday.
Oh, my God.
Happy birthday.
She's fifteen.
Happy birthday.
Fifteen, wow. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we move on to our consent calendar, are there any things that order, like, full, A, please, A. Carol, maybe, can I, can I, can I make, uh, a motion, please, for consent calendar items.
Um, the subject of the consent calendar? Um, I wanted to, um, this may be sort of a case of first impression here, but, um, I wanted to find out what the procedure is for a member of the public to request that items be removed from the consent calendar. In my case, tonight, um, if I were able to, I would want, um, items A, B, G, and H to be, um, not handled with the rest of the consent calendar items. Now, I don't know what the board's established or not established procedures about this, I do note that, uh, city council, um, allows members of the public, as well as members of the city council, uh, as well as members of staff, to request that items be pulled off of the, it's not that they get pulled off of the consent calendar, they just don't get approved in this, uh, consent calendar, they get dealt with, um, in the regular meeting. The reason why, um, occurs to me that, um, the top of the people down at the clerk's office, city council, they said, that's what they view the law as requiring. Um, in my case, the reason I raised the question is that last year, the board on the consent calendar approved the appropriation of the contract for the contractor who was, uh, given the assignment of justifying the, uh, facility fee increase, which is a tax increase, and that was approved on, uh, consent calendar. And there's a number of other examples of matters being approved on the consent calendar, uh, that are material, um, uh, and not just procedural or non-convergental, and it's uh, recognized, this is a problem where the consent calendar ends up getting abused to, uh, have matters go through that should really be on the regular calendar, so I didn't get ready. Um, I don't know what the ruling of the chair will be on it, but I know that, um, other school districts and city councils, under the government code, and then the education code, now I gotta tell you, I'll be honest with you. I went to the education code, and I looked for the provisions that involve a member of the legislative body or the agency being able to get things off of the, um, uh, consent calendar. I didn't have time to talk to the city attorney or to request, uh, legal funding, I gotta tell you, I'll be candid with you, I couldn't find it in the education code or the government code. I was told by the city clerk's office that that is how they read the law, but at any rate, it may be a discretionary matter, it may be a mandated matter, I'm not in a position to advise or, or make any comments on that. I just wanted to raise the fact that, um, I think it'd be great, and I think it'd be consistent with the city council does, if members of the public were also able to ask for matters not to go through on the consent calendar. Thanks.
I could not answer that at this moment about what actually occurs, but, um, because I would ask, and then, and then research it, I do know that members of the public can ask questions about the consent calendar, but technically, the consent calendar is, if you don't do that, if you have questions, if a board member has questions, they pull it off, and so, um, with the concern, right, with the concern raised tonight by Mr. Hills, if, if, if it's acceptable for the board to get, uh, an answer of what the procedure is, is that we pull those items he referenced off, and then do what we normally do, which is bring each one up separately, and that gives him the opportunity to make his comment or ask his question. Because I know, all I can think back is when we had members of the public that were coming and had questions on the consent calendar, we didn't follow that consent calendar procedure, we just, you know, what, after we had a motion second, we would have any public comment, and the comment would be made, but that's not how consent seems to work, so what do you think? We did that tonight, because of, to my doubt.
Did you want to remember, just so that, I mean, you can also wait a while, a time, to discuss those.
Well, that's a topic we're doing, right, that's a procedure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that, that's. But then we need to get the answer on how, how the procedure should be done. So, do, do what I suggested, okay, so that's C, so D. It was, uh, you said, Mr. Hills, A, G, I, G, and H, that's what you say, and I'm asking, is that what it was?
Yeah. Yes.
And Mrs. Brown has already pulled A, so then I would ask if we pulled B, G, and H. So then I need a motion to approve consent calendar items C, D, E, F, I, J, and K, so I'm gonna second, you know, okay, this, are any further questions or comments briefly from both of you, corrections? Always in favor?
I.
opposed, carries for a one. So now I need a motion to approve the minutes, um, actually, your point, your point is just.
I'm just, I need to say.
Your point, A, A one.
A one, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And now.
I have to pull, both people, they.
I'm sorry, my bad.
I wasn't intended to add.
I wasn't, I was just.
So, yeah, let's see them separately, so this will be the February fourteenth minutes in motion.
Second.
And.
Sorry, it was.
No, it's Karen in favor, it's, it's, I, always in favor, I opposed, and let it ditch. Uh, the group, a motion for the March fourth minutes.
March seventh.
Why, since I said fourth.
It's Saturday morning, I'm.
Well, that's true, did I already mess that up, Mr. Hills, did you want to comment on the February fourteenth minutes, or the so?
Uh, yes, I did, but, um.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We pulled it off, and then I just, my mistake.
Well, no, it's, it's, I appreciate, uh, the board's, uh, uh, forbearance, uh, I did have a comment on that, uh, on the minutes from that meeting.
Okay.
If this be, it's the right time for me to make those comments.
Right, I'm, I'm saying, I apologize, because we, no one, I do ask you specifically.
Yeah, I understand, it, I'll, I'll just make a couple of brief comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, uh, again, back on my, uh, subject, um, I noted that, uh, in the minutes, it, it's recorded that, um, uh, board member Norman then asked about wanting to do more governance workshops, and, um, as I said, uh, when, last time I attended a governance workshop, um, it was a very nice gentleman, but the material, I reviewed intensively the materials they, they distributed, and, um, it, um, in the, in the materials they distributed, there was no discernment or distinction made between what was statutory based and what was, in essence, uh, convention based in their description of what protocols should be, and what best practices should be, and, um, I would note that the board had a discussion that lasted almost an hour about something called the no surprises rule, well, there is no such thing as a no surprise rule, unless the board adopts a no surprises rule, uh, by an act of the board. And so the board had a latter discussion with your governance consultants about compliance with the no surprises rule, uh, when there is no, no surprises rule, and this goes back to basics of governance. There has to be an act of the board, it has to be voted on, it has to be recorded in the minutes, it's not recorded in the minutes, it doesn't exist under the law, and yet, there was an hour-long discussion about the no surprise rule. So, my point that I'm going to, is back to, as I was saying before, um, it's, these governance issues are really critical, um, if you look at your, uh, board policy, I think it's three zero one zero, the board policies and the bylaws are no different than a municipal ordinance that it's adopted by, it's the law, and it says it's binding on the board, so for example, um, tonight, there's no student representative, your, your board rules say that there will be a student representative here, and that the student representative will participate in discussion and cast votes. This goes back to the fundamental issue of the lack of enacted civic culture, and active student government at the high school and the junior, at the middle school. Um, and, um, so these are all issues that are interesting, and they're related to the, the mythology, the myth, mythology, um, methodological approach to governance, um, that, um, is so important, so I just want to say, I note that, uh, board member Norman was talking about having another workshop, um, and I would just commend you for doing that, uh, but I would, I would hope it would be a more rigorous process, and the two processes that I've observed with governance workshops, because I don't think the board's getting really good, useful, reliable information in the two workshops that I've attended, and, uh, so anyway, I just wanted to make those comments about the, the minutes from that meeting.
Okay. We still, we are in the March seventh.
The March seventh.
The March twelfth, I know, but.
I'm going to, you move, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm second, okay, Carol, let me.
Uh, so, you. I don't, we just seem to, we have questions on this.
No, just very anonymous.
Mr. Hills, did you have something to say on?
No, good.
All favor, I, I opposed. Now, you, uh, we'll, we'll go on. Second, second, uh, I guess, I know. Okay, and, and I would say, based on, and this is, oh, we'll get the, we'll get the answers at another time, but, Mr. Hills, I'm thinking that if, if one of us had pulled the minutes off, it would have been only for a change or correction, and that if we had a comment of something that had come at that meeting, we would make it at now, which is either the board comments we just had, or at the end of the meeting, we have a new section on the general board. or at the end of the meeting, we have a new section on general board comments. So I'll ask for that to be a clarifying question also. With the same reply for the number of the public asking, there would only be a correction or a clarification when it's on the minutes. Same thing I would assume would apply to the personnel calendar. So if you're asked to have that pulled, so I'm assuming it's a question or a clarification.
Yes.
Okay. This is the time.
Okay.
Before we vote on it, because.
Yeah, I mean, I'm basically, any item on the agenda, the public gets through their three minutes on it.
I'm just saying, the consent calendar, and I'll ask to have this clarified. I understand it stands separately and that we don't discuss those items.
Right.
It's only for a question or a clarification that needs to be discussed.
Yeah, that's kind of the rule for you and what the rule is for the public, I defer to you obviously. But let me just say, I'm not trying to be vexatious here, but I think that these are interesting questions that deserve answers on. And with respect to this item, the only thing I wanted to comment on was the two items under part seven relating to the forty hour an hour, five hours in one cases and ten hours in another case, relating to the preparation of the fund and need video for school power. I got some emails and some phone calls about this today. I actually have a brand new granddaughter and I wanted to be home with her tonight, but some people asked me to come in here and just raise this as a point of clarification. And it is, you know, and this actually relates back to last year's video as well. People are wondering if people were paid to do the video that was done last year for the fund and need program, the video concerning the. The video that was involving, that has become somewhat controversial because it involved the issue of portraying a murder for hire scenario. And at any rate, it was humorous and apparently it was in the nature of satire. But for a lot of people, it was viewed as not in good taste, if not in fact offensive and unfair to some people. But at any rate, the point is, I would like to request as a clarification information item to know, you know, the, the bylaws prohibit solicitation of funds. This year, on this video, we have a situation where school power solicited money based on a commitment from the school district for $240,000. And the solicitation that was done by school power was not in the nature of the school's gonna, you know, use existing facilities or capabilities, but was gonna actually come up with a new $240,000. And so if the school district is not in fact going to come up with a new $240,000 to match the 140 that was gonna be raised by school power, you have an issue of whether or not the solicitation was honest. Because they raised money based on saying the school district is gonna put up a new $240,000. So a lot of people are emailing me and asking me both with respect to this year's funding need video and with respect to last year's, was it a proper use of school staff to be involved in solicitation of funding? And, you know, obviously I don't have any problem with people paying money to staff, but is it proper for staff to be involved? So that was the point of clarification I wanted to make.
So you have the question and you're given the answer from someone?
Thank you.
Any board member questions on this? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Here is four oh, and the next item was G. You had a question, a clarification on your district attendance agreements, students from other districts?
Yeah, and this will be the last one, I gotta go home and see my new granddaughter. And I apologize. I don't come to meetings as much anymore, so when I come, I have a few issues. I just, on this subject, I just want to ask something. With these, you know, I guess it's eight thousand five hundred dollars per student and it is about half a million dollars for the students that we're bringing in and then about 175,000 dollars for the students that are going out. One thing that people have asked me about is this. People are asking, this is a question, this isn't an argument or an assertion, it's a question. Are we giving employees of the school district a benefit related to their employment by allowing them to bring their kids to the school district? And I'm being asked that, I don't know the answer to that. And the concern is this, if that's the case, and it's costing a half a million dollars a year, there's kind of a similar issue to what goes on in the city. You know, the city's had that whole issue about providing mortgage assistance for city employees so that they can afford to buy a house and live in Laguna Beach. And the last time I went to city council meeting, that subject came up, they were basically saying, look, we gotta have some standards, some criteria, some rules. Either this is a blanket and all the employees get it, any employees want it, or it's how is it decided which employees are able to do this? Or is it just a misconception that it's related to employment? I don't know. But in the city's case, they realized they were gonna have to promulgate some standards, some criteria, so that it's not just an ad hoc, arbitrary, capricious, and in fact, in some cases could be discriminatory. That you really want to have a policy that's uniform, when do you do it and when do you not do it? Again, I'm not making an assertion, I'm just saying that the question's been asked by a lot of people and I thought I would bring it up and get it on the record, that if it is in fact is part of an employment benefit or privilege or an employment related privilege, there ought to be a set of written standards and criteria and policies for the, for doing it.
We have a policy, there is a policy, and at this point, that policy continues to be supported by a majority of the board.
What's that?
There is a policy and at this point, on the last revision, the policy continues to be supported by a majority of the board.
Okay. So I'll.
So it's in place and it, and it's under what the title is.
Fifty thirty five.
Fifty thirty five.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome. Okay, and G, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? You said, that's the last one. Thank you. All in favor?
I.
We still are passing on that and H, correct?
Yeah, no.
Well, I can't make a comment. Thank you so much for showing all the kids the leave and.
Well, we should add to that, that that's accurate as we can be because the student leaves, go to a private school.
We don't know.
They don't, they don't get a transfer.
Right, as I say, and that's.
Right, so we don't have.
So we have no idea.
The numbers of that.
Right. And then this isn't really, we don't have APA, so we're just trying to assign. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm sorry, board members and administrators, if this is not the time to say this, but I did, I just do want to note that even though we appreciate our student reps coming to the meeting, that there are times where, as you referenced, the time parameters within this meeting and not knowing and taking into consideration their study assignments. It's the same as tonight, we are missing board member Perry, who is organizing vacation and she's allowed to do that because she has a commitment to be at the. So it's the same with our student reps. I mean, we like to have them here, but it's sometimes it doesn't work out. So, thank you. Our next item is an information item, we have three board policies to approve during tonight. Are you three ones?
All right, so this is the first reading, so we would appreciate feedback in any direction that may come from this. The first one, I'll go through in order, just so we can get questions and work on it. Fifty one forty five dot three, which is an update to the nondiscrimination policy. This policy was updated, and it continues to be updated fairly regularly in line with the education code shifts as well as court cases. And so this is being requested that if we move to a second reading and with that, it's a mandated policy as well by the state. So. Any questions, concerns, or thoughts?
I have comments.
Okay.
Sure. So on the fifth paragraph, the board also prohibits any form of retaliation against any student who reports or participates in the reporting, right? So it goes into all of the discussion. And, and I think that Jason might talk to her enough, but it's still leaving that. Like, I just want to bring it up here so we can talk about it and say whatever we want of order, because can I give information to her or not? But if someone reports maliciously with harassment and without a reasonable belief that unlawful discrimination has been perpetrated, so someone did it, feels like support. Yeah, it feels like they want to lap someone out of the running. I mean, there's one that might be four, right? And it's malicious. If it's covered within that or the board prohibits, because you would then investigate it, then go through a process, right? You would investigate it, go through it, it's not retaliation, but it can, it can seem murky. So I just didn't know if we put something that says. When it says that subject to appropriate consequences of the county's special exception. Wasn't that for? Well, it was just a point of like, if someone did it maliciously, it just wasn't inherent. A lot of times with bullying harassment, that's in there with the someone's the whole time. It's just not covered and might not need to be covered, it might be implicit in, within this program.
I see it as implicit.
It is implicit. But that's what we have to agree upon, I think. We see it as implicit or we want common tact, I guess, as the.
I just need direction from the majority of the board.
Yeah.
If you want me to get.
Okay. I think it's implicit.
And that's how I read it.
Yeah.
I just, I just.
Yeah.
A false file would be a different entity.
I've got a policy and thought about it and you want to.
What, what, the last sentence is what stands out to me, which is essentially saying that if there was a retaliation complaint that was filed, that.
It would be investigated.
It would be investigated and resolved in the same manner that we would, we would process this, the initial complaint.
Or is like harassment.
Correct, it's a plea harassment. So then we would determine, so if there was a false claim that was made to regarding students, students or whatever may be re-investigated and found that it was in fact false, so somehow that student, who was making that claim had somehow violated education code. And then we had, and we discipline that student, they wouldn't be able to come back to this and say, we retaliated for refiling if they purposely knew, right? Obviously, we have that information, so. And so, I'm trying to get into what, too many what ifs, because obviously that brings us down the road a little bit. I think that's, it spells out that retaliation would be investigated and that's the intent of the language on this one.
And also, I, I'm fine with it please, but I, because I had a pause and wondered, I was like, okay, should you guys see it that way and read it that way? Because I didn't.
No, I didn't.
I did. Because I already, you know, like, I guess.
Close reading.
Yes. And so then, on page seventy seven, second blue paragraph, second sentence starts with filing or submission, right? Because we talked about submission everywhere else and so we could add or submission just to, to keep it, the language. Okay, refer back to. Regardless of whether you're using. Sorry, regardless of whether a complaint, right? You got that, but a complaint. Or other formal filing or submission. Right, we can add or submission because as we're here, it talks about filing or submission. Anybody share, yes, the other one? Skip, but maybe we could add or submission because I could submit, right? But I thought it was a wording from the character I can put. So I was trying to prepare it.
There's filing of the, first page, I was filing. I don't find submission.
Yeah, I thought it said or submission, so that's just my bad. Should I forget about Jason? I didn't. That was really, it was just, I saw it, it was malice within merit.
The next one, nine two two, nine two two two.
Yes, yes.
Resignation, this is a bylaw update to clarify several areas regarding board member resignation. Really what it does, it reorders and provides more explanation as to tendering resignation and board member resigning, when it would go into effect if in fact there was a request for a deference, how long the deference could be, and so on and so forth. So, you know, we, the intent of this would be to give, you know, the board members on the current board, kind of, formal warning. However, the resignation really is through the county office of, county superintendent and not someone who would process it. So if someone was to in fact resign, that would be the type of situation.
And then the last thing I had on that was the second paragraph, the first sentence where it says, the resigned board member shall, but it's just encouraged because we're talking about what if they just, they skip that part or what if something's happening to them medically and someone else was going online and needing the forms for it and they just didn't submit the written thing? There's still, the county is gonna show the resigning. Right, but we have something that says they shall, so then they, would they just not be resigning until they actually wrote the letter?
I think, I don't think it has to be the actual board member.
Because it's not.
Somebody can just say.
It's just the idea. But it's not in like, it's not, I hope, it's not in the code.
No, I think.
Right, the idea, this is just to, it's like common courtesy. Right, and that, that's like cursing encouraged, but I just thought shall, I, again, was paused of, you know, Jason, what? Something, they're resigning or they're not.
Board member may, or.
Or encouraged.
Is encouraged to, rather word.
Just use may. Just may, so she'll also, yeah, put may in it, yeah.
With that changed, feedback for a second reading.
Yes.
Okay, next one.
Oh, did you ever comment on that one?
On this?
No.
All right, so ninety, for bylaw ninety seven, ninety two seventy seven. Conflict of interest, the intent was to update and expand definitions and explanations. There's somewhat of a moving of language around as recommended by the CSB language that's in there. And so the languages, again, the focus is as clear by law as at least conflicts of interest. So there are some updates to the code regulations that are recited. And this will provide that, those updates, because there's a bunch of new updates that are recited in the code.
And so for this, there's, you know, they, they took five findings of very clear conflict of interest law, calculating conflict of interest law and turning five pages. And, and it's rewarded in ways that, you know, the benefit of this policy is supposed to be so I would understand whether something is of conflict, this policy does not help me. I have to go into code and figure it out, right? It's not, it's not clear, it doesn't make it clear. And I can go through some examples, some of them will be concerning, depending who else wants. But this one makes me think of having the governing, you know how here is that we could talk about conflict and I just today, today, talking about conflict. But should we really understand it and then we define what this is? Or that we understand it and we, and we say that we will abide by the laws? Because they're changing, case law changes, statutes of use, laws changes. And that, and that we'll have regular train on conflict of interest, because that's where we get in trouble. It's just having the knowledge of it, so that we know what is staying with. It doesn't go through the difference of like, if it's material or if it's economic.
Okay, so part of it.
It's not clear in here.
Part of it, I think, we're in, here in the weeds a little bit. Just because.
So you want an example? You want an example?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so they talk about, so in the first paragraph, it says family and then here it says.
Yeah.
And then it says relative.
Right.
Right. And then it says immediate family. It is a change of actual laws, that we just use different words. And it doesn't distinguish those, but it does distinguish, it does tell you what things are relative, as it defines relative there. But change the word again, so then what's that? And then on gifts, you just take gifts, right here in page twenty four, gifts actually have a family member exception in the law. And then this doesn't, so this is, so it says limitation, so the, so the way the limitation of what she can accept as a gift in a business is $470, okay? From anyone.
Of course, forget that, but go ahead.
Well, the way this is written, like, your husband bought you something for $500, right? And you have a kid in school and he wants whatever score or whatever. It's a violation of a conflict of interest.
No, that's impossible, my, my kid, my husband buying whatever he wants.
But it doesn't have the exception in here, there's an exception that should be part of this. It should give the exception, it does not say that such a family. In this list of what it says, it says for exchange between individuals on birthdays, holidays, or similar occasions providing gift exchange are not substantially disproportionate in value, right? And so, it doesn't, it should just exclude family in there. But there's all these little sections where.
I'm sorry, I, this is, this, so, so basically, Jeff was buying me a birthday present. I'm sorry, I this is this, so so basically Jeff wants to buy me a birthday present, he can't buy me a birthday present because of this?
You have kids in school.
You know, because Floyd won't. But even if I did, he's still, it's.
Over four hundred and seventy dollars.
But that's.
That's why it normally would have family member exclusion, just the the language is a year ago, the language is in the past.
I'm. Again, I think I think this is, you're looking on the real bar there that doesn't exist.
You're looking at this.
No, I, one of the things that we did have, you know, the attorney look at it one time, um and, you know, clarified that it's important that it's as applicable by law, because if there is exceptions, then they would, it would be as applicable by law, the conflict of interest code.
Right.
Um if there is a request, that we have the attorney go through it one more time and clarify again, I have no no problem, I can bring it back for our first uh first read.
Same first read.
Uh again, I don't have any issue with that.
I sense, I sense that Carol's feeling a lot of discomfort with this.
Yeah, so that's mine.
That feeling that it's really going to affect her personally, and she wants to make sure that she doesn't.
But why wasn't.
But it is an integrity of both the law sets.
But can you, can you, can you then.
Just know what we're saying.
Right, exactly, shoot, man, there goes my arrows.
Right, well, you can have them.
Can you, no, 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 but 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 so can you though clarify it with Jason exactly what it is you're concerned about, like Ken giving you.
Outside of here, can I get through?
Yes, no, can you, yeah, can you just, yeah, so he can, so he can say, so you can say, I'm worried Ken can't buy me a new ring, because I have two kids at school.
Yeah. Yes. So that's more. Right, right. It just, it defines family, relatives, immediate family, and that these families that far, right?
Yeah, I don't read it that way.
Well, here's what I think is the best step, I think, one, we can um all all, we'll take it back, we will, and this is what this process is intended for, so thank you.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Um so we'll take it back, we'll um spend some time getting, make sure I get the questions that Carol concerns related to that, we'll be able to bring it back from the first read. Uh I think one of the things that I heard um from Norman in state is that it would be beneficial at some point in the future. Um and um I think it was alluded to by um our uh Mr. Fagan in his presentation, that when he reviewed very quickly um the conflict of interest law, that as he stated, you know, um this is something that could be an all day type training, or at least a half day type training. And he said we were much on the the governance protocol situation, um we can, I can investigate other opportunities there, which, you know, those who will be interested staff or uh board wise could maybe possibly attend the C S B A or something to that, in fact, to see if they offer something off conflict of interest. If um as well, so I can, I can do two things around that, uh if that is.
Well, that's a question.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's it's it makes you start to think though, if you have, I mean, what influences a person's vote? It doesn't have to be a gift.
No.
Right.
I mean, that's, you're raising questions that I don't even know if there's an answer to.
Well, but there is.
I mean, no, some of those are the answers to, but as far as.
Right. The ones that there are answers to in the law, which I stated so clearly, and that and you know, and.
All of the examiners get here, if your own husband gives you a gift, then then you're, then we, based on your concern, then it may be, I would make the assumption that that he's really interested in how you vote on items that affect student.
Well, well, the thing is.
Students in the district, or maybe he never said, I don't know.
I thought you were so cute, and suddenly he.
It's fair, we need those.
He had Mark, suddenly Mark, or I was like, what if it was for valedictorian, right, and your kid could be in line with the valedictorian, you don't have one, and then you voted because you hooked your kid who was gonna be the valedictorian.
Yes, of course.
I mean, those are conflicts, and so that's.
The torrid double pram of all, that's right.
Yeah, we don't do this.
No, 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 that we would have, let's say we don't have valedictorian, we don't have ranking or something, right? And then we want to bring in ranking, but we only want to bring in ranking because it benefits us, so look, the conflict of interest is all these ways of, it's had statues in which.
You got mine.
And that's again, so that's why we we when we first looked at it, we wanted to do a typical bylaw, because the national standard is by law.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm like. Down in there.
Of that, so I will, but but the next step, just for the sake of time, I will spend some time, I will uh I will verify um with.
I think that would.
Yeah, that's what, because because I got, I got no, I have no idea, I'm having really.
Of course, so. We'll bring it back for a second reading.
This is so. So, or if you want to vote for them, you want to, you want to stem more money here. But so when I read the policy, though, I'm looking to see, are we trying to add something or are we just taking the law, like, we're trying to, another description, or we're just, because that's what we're gonna love it, is a gathering bottom.
I'm just trying to call.
And this is a bylaws, this is.
Right.
Right.
Right, and yeah, it's our bylaws, it's for us, this is for us, so we all understand, but when you're looking at things, it's like, are are we just taking the law of the laws and explaining it, or are we trying to add something or strip, right?
Right. Like I said. Right, yeah, so.
Did I see you raise your hand, Mr. Earl?
Got a public comment on this?
Yes.
Well, um you know, I think that uh Board Member Norman raises some really cogent questions here. I also think that um Board Member Brown raises some very cogent questions about getting lost in the weeds. I think it's um uh I'm on record, two and a half years ago, uh two and a half years ago, I requested that the board suspend the work of the superintendent's committee on bylaw revision, um because I saw this coming. And what I said two and a half years ago was this, I said, the purpose of local bylaws and board policies is to codify at the local level, local rules that are not addressed in state law, state regulations, or federal regulations. I said, two years ago, a year ago, this process of bylaw and board revision that you're doing is um importing into the local rules, state rules, that don't need to be imported into the local rules, because they're state rules. And when you need to refer to them, you go to the state rules. And if you look at what's happened over the last three or four years, it actually started about ten years ago, this creeping importation of state rules into the local rules, and the fact of the matter is that this is what's happening all over the state, and it's one of the products of the California School Board Association, which has encouraged this process. And you don't need, you know, if this were necessary, every state legislature would spend most of its time importing federal law into state law. If this were necessary, you would spend the, this is, you are spending an inordinate amount of time revising your bylaws to import state regulations and laws, and uh Board Member Norman is absolutely correct. Now, I want to say also, I requested last year, an opinion about whether or not the superintendent should be disclosing any future employment discussion she's having, and recusing herself from any actions that might relate to anything that she might be contemplating in terms of future employment. And she wrote me back an email and said, um she has no obligation to commit to refuse herself from anything, and I mean, this is clearly wrong. But the point is this, you need to have a lawyer, a relationship with a lawyer who can advise you on what state law and regulation requires, when there's a specific question. And to import all this and try to figure out what the implications are of this in this manner, um this is unfair. Um because I'll tell you right now, this will tie you up in knots for years, and the whole process should have been unwound two years ago, and you should have gone back to strictly local issues and local rules, and then um refer to state law and regulations when you need to.
Okay, so we're set on two coming back for second reading, and the one for answers, and one for. Now we have action items for tonight's meeting, our first action item is approval of a positive certification of second interim report, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, um it's my pleasure to be here to present our our second inter interim report. There aren't much changes from the first interim in this current year, however, you're gonna see in this presentation, we are gonna highlight some changes we're expecting in our out years, which one small component of our interim report is a multi-year projection. So being our second interim report, this is our second snapshot in time to see how we're doing as compared to the budget that was adopted at the beginning of this year. So some things have changed, the biggest one being the governor's proposed budget in January, and we're gonna have another major revision in May with May revision, which will help us finalize our budget for the year and solidify our budget development process that we'll bring back to you in June. So some of the highlights that we saw, I'm gonna start off with what the biggest impacts are in the out years for us, and then we'll talk about this current year, because there are many changes. Some of the highlights we saw from the governor's proposed budget was a fairly significant reduction in forecasted revenues. He's still forecasting positive revenues um for this year, but that five and a half billion dollar decrease um is assumed from the past two years and this year. So it actually has a minor effect on Proposition ninety eight guarantee, not a big deal for us, because we don't rely on a lot of the state funding. Uh that net result for Proposition ninety eight guarantee is about a two point two billion dollar reduction in proposed education spending in the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget. So what does this tell us? The governor is preparing for some rough times. His uh January budget proposal looked very conservative, and by all other measures from U C L A's economic forecast, uh the C B O office, it was all, everyone assumed it was fairly conservative, we won't know that until we get into the May revision, where we'll get some new information. So his proposed budget in January doesn't have any change in our our projected revenues for this year. However, um the one-time money that we got this year was about seven hundred, or I'm sorry, was a um two hundred and fourteen dollars per eighty eight, and we got that this year, and we're we're on track to receive that much. Next year, it's gonna be reduced down to forty eight dollars per eighty eight, so that's one-time money that can be spent on one-time expenditures. An example of one-time expenditure could be like a facilities project, it could be equipment purchases, anything that doesn't require a multi-year commitment or ongoing expense. So another um item that we got from the governor's budget is that a a report from the Public Policy Institute of California, the P P I C came out that recommended the elimination of CELPUS, which is a consortium of school districts that helps support other school districts with regards to serving students with special needs. The governor acknowledged this in his budget proposal, and they are having stakeholder meetings statewide in all different locations to get feedback from all the school districts and other stakeholders on what the implications of implementing that P P I C report recommendations into the governor's two thousand seventeen budget moving forward. Uh this would have a fairly negative effect on us from all accounts, because a lot of the services that we need to rely on, and I think um Spike can speak to this a lot more than I can, but we rely on those CELPUS, because being a small district, we can't provide all the services to support all the special needs that we encounter, so um.
Those stakeholder meetings, do we have folks involved in those?
So there's only five.
There are only five stakeholder meetings in the state?
Five. Five stakeholders.
Five stakeholder, five stakeholder meetings in the state.
Yes.
Uh we did have, um sorry to interrupt here.
No.
We did have staff from the CELPUS, um who attended, and uh it was pointed out when um uh relay to us, uh well, me and myself and Jeff, that when a comment came from the audience, did you consider basic aid districts?
No.
When you were developing your report, because you didn't seem to mention them in your report, and the answer essentially was no. So there's a clear um disconnect, um that the P P I C report missed some components. Um uh and didn't truly look at the totality of all those school districts in the end state and um and didn't like kind of create recommendations for how you would actually help support uh those uh small CELPUS like we are in in Jackson, or if we were to become our own CELPUS, how would we resource other, you know, we would be our own, we would be our own, because we would be ourselves, but how would you be able to resource other districts that are larger and and um and let's not forget, the recommendation also is actually to provide more funding, to increase the funding for special education services, which um I believe that the budget is pretty much flat uh for this current year, so again, we're picking and choosing recommendations, it's an interesting thing, so let's hope that this stakeholder uh feedback provides more more insight to uh next steps, so.
Thanks, you're really fortunate.
Thank you.
No, this is another one size fits all approach, so we're more in good with the reserve cap.
This is.
Yeah. And then we have what we know is coming, an increased cost of the employee pension, the STIRS, and PURGE. So when we look at beginning next year, what we know today, you can see on your left-hand side what our projected new revenue is, and that's unrestricted dollars, so that's our increase in property tax. And that is based on um receiving a seven point seven percent roughly increase in revenues o- over last year. And on your right is the projected increase in expenses of things we can't control. So you have step in column, which is around two percent, you have the STIRS and PURGE rate increases, which is a little over two percent, almost three. And you can see that it's almost even with the projected new revenues. So like as I mentioned, this is what we know today, um we'll see what comes out with the May revision. We pretty much know what our revenues are, and we'll have a really good idea in April when our bigger tax receipt comes in. Um but unless something's done with the change, now seven columns said as well, but unless something's done with that STIRS and PURGE rate increase, um you know, you can see why a lot of districts are scrambling.
We don't have a lot that are in jars.
We have no, we've no leeway.
So another graphic that I wanted to show was um, and we could, we'll talk about this later, let's be, some of the two thirty five, is our largest revenue source is our property tax, and in the second interim, we continued our projection of about six and a half percent growth in property tax. But as you can see by our historical chart here, it's never been the same year over year, our property tax receipts are very volatile. So we want to be careful what we assume, now the good news is, it's never gone up or down by more than two to three percent. So you're not gonna hopefully see these large swings, although just because something hasn't happened doesn't mean it won't. So we want to be as conservative and budget accordingly, based on the history of what we've seen. The blue is the actual property tax receipts, the red line is the percent change year over year, it's always been positive, but you can see there's years where it was fifteen percent growth and years where it was one and a half percent growth.
That's impossible.
So this second interim report, getting down into this current year, as I mentioned, there weren't many changes that we've experienced. Um our revenues are pretty much on track with what we had provided you in the first interim report. Federal revenue had a slight increase of a little over five thousand dollars, and these are suggestions we will, we make as we receive uh the funding from them for the notifications. Other state revenue increased uh a little bit, thanks to our per technical education grants. And other local revenues um increased slightly from what we had originally in the budget, mostly thanks to school power P T A initiatives. Our expenditures um didn't really change much, there are also some minor changes, I'd say the most significant was moving uh majority of the Thurston gas replacement project out of the general fund into the facility repair and replacement fund, so that actually helped free up a little over four hundred thousand dollars back into the general fund. This is a summary, a very, very concise summary of what's being recorded in the second interim in terms of our revenues and expenditures, you can see that our general fund revenue, most of it is coming from property taxes, and then you have our state revenues, federal revenues, and um other transfers in, that transfers in this year happened to be uh the Aliso property reserve, remember we took, we drew down five hundred thousand and put back in there.
I'll give you a take.
So normally transfers in haven't been that high historically, so. And then you can see salaries and benefits is our highest expense, as it should be, we are a service industry, and we're serving the kids with our people. Books and supplies, uh capital outlay, other uses and transfers out, the transfers out is primarily transferring into the FER and the capital improvement program. Here's just a graphic to show exactly what we just said, most of our revenue is through local property tax. And then you have small amounts from the Fed and the state, which is why the governor's revenue assumptions aren't necessarily as impactful. Um but at the same time, our our volatility of how much property tax we get year to year is something we also need to be very cautious about. And this will be expenditures, you can see there, the green is, highlights the the salary and benefits, makes up both of our expenditures. Supplies and services, capital outlay, and other outgo, so the interim fund transfers again here into our uh capital improvement program, the facilities repair replacement program. And last is uh graph, and you probably remember this from the first room, and there's very little change in this, but it shows what we've committed to ongoing expenses versus um our ongoing revenues, you can see that this is okay, we are, we just spent this year, and that's reflected in the second interim report, that's why we show larger expenditures and revenues. But moving forward, we haven't committed to those expenses next year, which is why you see a little over a twelve thousand dollar positive, and then the third year out, where it's a little over a million dollars positive. So our multi-year is primarily the four C L E costs that we're projecting, and the one-time is mostly the facilities costs that we're projecting, that's what makes that up. So that is a summary of our second interim report, and I'm happy to say that we um can meet our financial obligations in current year and the next two years out, and with that, I would recommend to the board that. can meet our financial obligations in current year and the next two years out and with that, I would recommend to the board that we, um, certify it as a positive report and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
As usual, love this graph.
Thank you.
Okay, love making them. Love it.
Thank you.
And all the different ones. So the, um, this one?
Yes. Property tax.
Yeah, dropping a little, so you'll.
So let me, actually, if I could spend a second on this. So we will know whether or not, we have projected seven point six percent in this current year that we're gonna receive. We're tracking about seven percent right now. However, we don't get our largest enforcement until April. So that would be the best indicator for us. So when we come back with the mayor revision information on that, we'll know better. But this trend, and you can see where we had these ups and downs, was never more than a two to three percent swing. So we assumed in the drop that we would go down to six and a half percent. And that's why that was assumed in the next year and then the next year out, maybe adjusted based on budget development. But at this time, uh, we wanted to keep it consistent with the first interim, so you didn't have to deal with a lot of changes for, for potential conflicts.
So that's, and that reflects in the multi-year?
That does reflect in the multi-year. It's about halfway through the report.
In the, right, page fifty seven, that part.
Yes.
The percentage of it. Uh, if we can get that, we're referring to, perhaps two years.
You see.
There's so much in here. And you said that for the projection for this year. And I gotta make sure I see the right place for the projections for the next two years. It's about six percent and six percent.
Six point three five and six point three six.
Okay, and that, and it's under the column that says change.
Yeah.
Or being called you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you for the question. All right, all in favor of taking this report, uh, opposed?
Aye.
Or next, um, is approval of California School Board Association twenty seven to delegate Assembly election. Okay.
Please vote.
Yeah. So anybody that.
And then someone sent us a letter about being a Biden, if he's not. I needed that too.
Yeah, she's kinda saw our emails.
Yeah. You did.
We can vote for none, but we don't have to vote for none. So. And who's in, D's in charge of this?
Well, she's, she goes to the means and talks to these people.
And then comes back and tells us.
Cause she didn't give us any recommendations.
Um, yeah. I tried to look it up, I'll see if I can find it, it's. Well, they give us some at school.
We gotta hack it up.
We gotta hack this stuff.
Yeah, hack it up. Yeah.
And so it's, um.
It's all, but it's.
Yeah. So that, some people are still on, I mean, that's, I don't really know these folks and some districts seem to have more representation than others, more work gap is all I just have to add with the lens that is term expired next year. Which probably about, and one district have a lot of folks.
Yeah, no, we're always kinda like, yeah, obviously we need it, but I'm, yeah, I'm seeing the same thing.
That's just based on reading the same side, you know, with the first fold, we just get down to these, yeah, people that daily came to us.
It gives them, it gives them some, because I don't recognize.
I just, I've met Robert, this is pretty good thing.
Well, I know, really, like, he's very passionate about their, that's it. I'm fine with.
Yeah. Without, do you have, we have.
Well, we want.
Right, but hopefully, we can't teach it.
Uh, we nine.
What's gonna, we don't have to do nine. No, but I mean, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
We're ready.
We'll be back to tell us.
Right, yeah, that's what we have to. No, we should.
That's presented by.
Yeah.
So she said Robert was nice.
Okay, so we should.
But that's all, I mean, that's. That would, that would get us up to seven.
That's so good, that's good to know. Okay, yeah. Then just ask us over you.
Uh, let's.
Oh, there we.
Say that.
All right, Alfonso Alvarez from San Antonio High School District, Carrie Clark from Centennial, Belinda, Bonnie Cash, from Panetta Beach Union High School District, Jeff Cole, Anaheim Elementary School District, Aldebar, Anaheim Union High School District, Robert Singer, Fullerton Drive Union High School District, Cindy Swartz, Saddleback, and Vice District. Okay, so D got motion, never seen yourself move.
Aye. I just read the back.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so Alfonso Alvarez, Carrie Clark, Bonnie Cash, Jeff Cole, Aldebar, Robert Singer, and Cindy Swartz, yes?
She's got a list. All right. Next, um, approval of support for Assembly Bill two thirty five and Act Two Men's Section four two one two seven point oh one, the Education Code relating to school finance. Two, two guys up there.
Okay, so, um, Assembly Bill two thirty five essentially would exempt basic aid districts like us, um, from the reserve cap being triggered. Uh, that's important to us because unlike state funded schools, as we recall, the volatility of our local revenues, um, cash flow becomes a significant factor for us. So having a well, um, built up reserve is important for a basic aid district because we're trying to expend all we want to be spending each year on our students. And so we don't have the safety protection that the state funded schools have where they have their minimum guarantee and the, um, state's ready day fund, which we wouldn't receive because we get more eighty eight portions than them via, via our local property tax. I will say that there has been recent amendments to Assembly Bill two thirty five that are favorable to all districts, but still exempts basic aid districts and small school districts. So basically what it does for all school districts now is it raises the reserve cap trigger so that it makes it harder to trigger the reserve caps for all school districts. So now all of us should be hopefully rooting in favor of Assembly Bill two thirty five and, um, by taking action tonight, we hope that the board will submit a letter of support on behalf of the Republican Party.
And then there'll be actually.
A letter.
Letter that's like.
I think you'd all say, yes.
Oh, yes, we will mail them.
Can you public comment on this? I am. I have a motion, several seconds. Any questions and further discussion? Call us in favor.
Aye.
Aye, propose.
Brilliant, we protect the area.
Very. Uh, next, Action item approval of curriculum committee recommendation for textbook adoption for Lincoln High School, Thursday Middle School, natural language courses.
Yes, number this, the part, Mrs. Falsburg and, um, Mr. First of all, uh, Miss Dan came forward to the, uh, fulfillment council, brought forth, um, some materials for adoption. They've been on display for the timeline. We're really excited about her selection and hoping for your support.
Any questions, comments? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of board policies separately.
I am. So, um, these policies were brought to you at the first read. Uh, they were, no, no, it's actually were all brought back, uh, for support for separated for tonight. Um, so there's.
Do we need to motion them separately or can we?
Did them all at once.
We can do it all at once.
I can do them all at once, brilliant that way. Oh, yeah, those are going for, uh, board policy A, B, C, zero, zero four, five, zero, one, two, four, zero, and five, one, four, one, four, two, four.
Any comments and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, for this panel. Um, next, um, approval of revised job descriptions and reclassification of CSEA positions.
So, um, our reclassification committee has continued to convene quarterly, uh, this year and looked at a number of series and individual requests. So you will see, um, here A through F, um, in the chart. Essentially, because it's a little confusing, we have reclassified our instructional assistant preschool IBI as instructional assistant special ed vacation. So it now creates one classification where the IBI training is provided as needed to any employee who may need it for particular groups of students that they're working with. And the recommendation from the committee is to reclassify the former group of instructional assistant special ed from a range twenty three to a twenty five. So they are all in alignment. Um, in addition, due to some changes in the grant requirements for the transition services coordinator, and that is paid for by TPP and workability, um, that there are some additional clerical functions for that position, so we're recommending a change in range there. Um, and then some job description updates for D, E, and F. So, um, the reception accounting office assistant position was vacant. So we just made some tweaks and updates to that job description. And then, um, we have, currently have two accounting specialists and we're proposing to split those back out to have one person working on accounts payable, one person on payable, and then they cross train. So in the event that one is on vacation, um, have sick, we have coverage to make sure that people get paid properly. So those are only job description and title changes.
Can you publicly comment on this item? Okay, I will.
Make a motion. I just have one question, yes. The, and I know it's not the person, it's the position, but just to clarify my head, is transition services Chris Cosley or is it Cindy Kimble?
Cindy Kimble.
Okay. Thank you.
Face and name.
Yeah, I just, it just worked out for me that way, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, propose. I really appreciate all of the different comments lately, followed with some new.
Yeah.
Really nice. Uh, next item is approval of agreement for student transportation services between Orange County school districts.
Item before you right now, it served as an option or backup for us in terms of transportation services. It was a big, put together by the county office of education as a co-op and we're not bound to using it, but it's good to have as a backup in case something happens with, or we need additional support. So that was written in the first debate.
I don't remember this.
I don't remember neither.
It's putting in, and we're starting to work more with other districts on co-op with, uh, working on right now looking for Mesa in terms of construction bits as well, but it's becoming more and more popular because of the lack of trade skills that are out there, but this, these type of bidding, um, techniques are starting to come more to life. So no, we haven't gone, we are, we're going to start.
So we would be, in this group, we'd be represented by Dirk.
Well, this is.
No, to not use our.
So.
And not use our.
So we have a fun, another option.
So we're, so we have other options, but we don't provide any option for anybody else.
So the, the county office put this together so that any school district that chooses to participate can use their bid.
Okay. It's the county.
Because when you transport kids, it, it's easily gonna exceed the bid limit.
Okay.
So it, it just gives us another option.
Now it's.
Buying, buying both.
Buying both.
It's buying involved.
Buying both.
Yeah, that's another thing.
It's like, okay, we need a bus.
Look at her.
Second.
Oh, yeah. That's a different voice, right?
Yeah, no. Lisa, was that you?
It was Carol, the one in the first place.
I was throwing, she's throwing her voice, my bad.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Okay, next is, um, approval of consulting services contract with vacuum technologies.
I'll take this one as well. Um, this is, and we talked about this as an information item with our state committee. One thing I do wanna point out is the contract that is submitted behind it is a template form from our insurance provider A C K. So we will need to make minor modifications and corrections, but the amount that's being approved tonight for, uh, procurement and implementation of rapid technologies is the set amount in the proposal. The terms will be, um, almost identical, they will be identical to what we've discussed in the past, I don't know what laid out in there, but we do need to fill out the information required.
So the zeros are not accurate.
Zeros for reimbursables is accurate, but the contract amount, the proposal got it passed behind as it should be.
No, it's not.
But the amount is.
It's in the board, so we're gonna change it, but make sure that numbers and structural are.
All right.
I was thinking, I'll do that amount so that explains it.
Yes, it is, it's in the item itself, but we do need to include the proposal.
Right, it's in there, but I couldn't find it in the paper, I guess, why?
Yes.
Okay, can we publicly comment on this? Any word, oh, motion, so moved, second.
We kinda like you.
Okay, any comments, questions, any?
I have a quick question. So each school site will have some kind of scanning type document for those driver's licenses? And then I appreciate that I think you need to communicate to parents that once your driver license is scanned, you're supposed to visit, you're kind of in, uh, right, so I think, if they always think every time that once you're in, you're in.
Yeah.
Don't be like.
I just agree.
I think so too.
I just think this is awesome.
If it gives address, something would be nice to address.
Well, I, I just have to say it in this meeting because I think this is, this is, um, like, I wasn't real comfortable with this at first when it came up because it is, because it's just like for me to accept that we're at that, this point in time in society and what we are, so if that's like both mindset, I mean.
I understand.
Good job.
And I, but it's, but it's, it really is kind of a shame that we.
It is, but you don't let.
We do it.
And our parents asked for it as well.
And was, Shannon did a nice presentation at PTA council.
Okay.
And so that was a way to start.
I thought it went over really well.
Yes, to get the information out and that it, um, just a necessary accommodation. Yeah. Any checklist things? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, please. Next is an action out in lease agreement with class leasing, not LC for two twenty five by forty, relocatable classrooms located at top of the world for a fixed fee of forty one thousand six hundred.
Thank you.
We'll take this.
Oh.
Give me the spatula, sir.
Oh, that's our power.
So.
We're just gonna present it now, that's an entire.
These two portables would go in support as interim housing for the top of the world, uh, portable replacement project. They would go, uh, we had interim housing up there before where we built a six thousand building where the tetherball courts currently are. We only need two to support, um, the classes while construction's underway and we are, we have divisional state architect approval on the project. And so we are comfortable entering into this lease agreement to get these portables here so that it's moving furniture over into them from the classrooms. And then we will soon come to you later in the next month and a half, two months with bid results on the top of the world gen seven buildings.
And you're, are you gonna put them in the same place, just over the tetherball court, sir?
Yes, so, and it's gonna be less of a footprint, obviously, because it'll only be two of them.
Right, right.
And then our plan is to not spend a lot of money connecting them on the utilities, so use temporary fencing behind them so that they can run above ground.
Can we make sure that they have intercom and they can hear things? Cause that's been the problem with some of those, is they don't, they can't hear.
Like if there's a dance, that's wrong.
Yeah, we need them now, they just need to be able to.
Yes.
Or a whole dish.
Yeah, there's signal data right where we put them, basically.
Okay, okay, just wanna make sure that there's.
And the students will be moving into those one.
Um, ideally some, and we don't have the exact date because we gotta schedule, once we get the sign, we'll get a, a drawing and schedule from them. But our, our goal is to have them moving in end of May, so that they can start construction.
Oh, wow. They move starts in the form of good.
Sooner we get, we'll be good.
Right. Okay.
So moved.
Got it.
For those. And relocatables.
Are there questions that are just gonna come in? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Okay, now we have our last item, board member request items for future meetings, request for information or demo comments. Perfect. Thank you for letting me get in the weeds.
That's protecting our. I don't know. I'm just getting the weed wrapper out, that's it, that's all. I'm just getting the weed shots. We're all good.
Um, need a motion for agreement, our next meeting, our next meeting, our meeting is Tuesday, March twenty eighth at six.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.